Okay, thank you.
Bulk sound, yeah. We'll put that as.
Jonathan, I don't know if you want to jump in or not, because this is a special meeting, the agenda can't get modified or amended, like added to. I think we were planning to do that on Friday at that special meeting to have that discussion then.
Okay.
So just to make sure we're staying within the bounds of what we're allowed to do.
Okay, yeah, things changed for the meeting rules, but yeah, we'll make sure we don't forget about that. For Friday it is. So then I guess I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda as it is.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Then four, okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah, just raise, just raise your hands, gentlemen, and Zach, can you see everybody?
Yeah, Mike King, yes.
Okay, Mike says yes. Okay, Mike, you're the only one we can't see, so we definitely need a verbal from you.
You got it.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda for the meeting minutes from three nine to twenty. I'd like a motion to accept those.
I'll make that motion to accept the consent.
Okay, a second, please.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Mike, aye.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Moving forward, we have the public comment. Did we get any comments? I have one from John Ritchie. I don't mind reading it if nobody else from staff wants to, but I didn't know if we had any other written things or we needed to address as far as the public comment goes. Was there anything else, Zach?
Yes, we also have, I believe Mike Curtis is going to provide public comment. I believe he's with us on the call now.
Is Mike here? Mike, you here?
I'm with you now.
Okay.
Commissioners, the only reason I'm on the agenda tonight is I get that call from Steve Martin regarding bond issue for the, to complete the rest of the trail. I'd like to address that issue and that issue alone very briefly. It's my heartfelt belief that the trail needs to be completed. It's also my belief that there is no grant money out there anywhere. As you know, I'm the chairman of the board of the trustees of the community college. I've seen how it dried up as a result of warrants, and I've seen the result of COVID-19 and how that's going to dry up any remaining grant money. So the idea of floating a bond is very appealing to me. I understand that there may be some resistance to the idea that the town should pay for a trail, but the reality of it is it becomes an asset of the town. It's yours. So if it needs to be paid for, it needs to be paid for. I would just hate to think that it's not going to be completed at all, or we're going to leave it as an incomplete project, and floating a bond or some other type of financing could easily be available. And with that, I would surrender the rest of my time.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Appreciate your comments. And I do have the written one the staff want to read. You want me to read it, the one from John?
If you want to go ahead and read it.
Okay. All right. So please keep in mind, this is John Ritchie who wrote this to the board. I'm reading it for him, just like I would any, anybody else who had an opinion for the special type of meetings we're having. So it says, Dear Wirral and Board, I hope this finds you, your family, our staff and commissioners safe and well. I am writing you today to ask you to strongly support the referendum for Cape Carteret Trail. I ask this for several reasons, but mainly the trail will be such a tremendous asset for our town when people look at what sets our town apart from neighboring towns. I see this as a selling point to choose to reside in our town. As you know as well, as we have been advised, our area is going to see at least a 30% growth rate in the near future once the new forty-two is completed in Morehead. But what I have found is in the last week is that the EDC has now moved that timetable up to an eighteen, twenty-four month timeline, other than the original five years. Also, I know that permits for new construction and remodeling has skyrocketed in Western Carteret County. Hamlet Isle set a new monthly record of $30,000 plus for inspection fees for the month of April. I can only imagine what her figures are, but I know Pelletier, Vogue and Cedar Point are also seeing big time collections. In closing, I would ask all commissioners to let the people have their say in this matter. Thank you for your service for our town, and may God bless you and the staff as always. And that was word for word from Mr. John Ritchie. Oh, was there anything else, Zach, as far as public comment is concerned?
Not that I'm aware of. I'll check with Sherry to make sure we didn't get anything, anything else.
Okay. Well, then we move on to town staff updates.
All righty, I'll go ahead and I'll go first. Yeah, just want to commend all of our staff on, on adapting to the COVID-19 situation and continuing to provide great services to the town. Everybody's done a great job at being able to adapt on the fly and to make accommodations to make sure that our services have not been interrupted. We're hoping that in the near future, we'll be having folks back in, in town hall to coincide with phase two of the governor's plan to reopen North Carolina, and then looking at in June, hopefully we can get back to doing some of these meetings in person with the possibility of maybe doing it outside on the stage out there in the community park. But just wanted to, just wanted to commend all of our staff and thank them for a job well done during this crisis. And, and that's all I have for this evening. I will, let's see, I know we don't have a list here, but if we want to go on to public works, I've got the update from Alex here on the screen. You want me to, Mayor Baker, if you want me to read it, I could do that as well. But if y'all can't see it on your screen.
Uh, I can see it. Anybody, I just asked if anybody had any comments?
I just had, this is Mike King. I had one comment, and I don't know if this is referring to the item you had at the beginning of the meeting, Mayor, but Alex, the, the sound, the bulk sound park there was closed, cut off with the, with the yellow tape because of the holes right behind the bulkhead. And I spoke with Alex about fixing that, and I went out there the next day, and he did a splendid job of making a temporary fix to that thing so it's usable. In fact, one lady was, her chair was sitting right where the, where the big hole was. So I would like to commend Alex for such a quick response, and that park is now open.
Thank you.
All right, any more comments, public works? Alex, got anything you want to add, or you ready to move on?
Uh, I'm ready to move on.
All right.
All righty, you want to go on to Police Department Chief, if you want to give an update?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I'll say, give kudos to Alex. He's always available when we need him, switching out cameras, climbing poles, all that. He put out the barricades Friday, and he's Johnny on the spot, so appreciate that. I've continued to encourage our officers to maintain good social distancing practices, and I think all of us are ready to get back to some type of normalcy around here. It's been a challenge. As far as calls by phone, we probably receive between 180 and 200 plus each month, so that continues. Also, I wanted to point out that Officer DiStefano was awarded the Officer of the Year Award by the local VFW chapter during what I call this COVID-21 minus two pandemic. And when we get away from the virtual meetings, we would like to present that to him when we are back in town hall. And just lastly, I'd like to encourage everyone just to take a look again at the pamphlets that were provided before the next meeting, if possible. That's all I have.
All right, anybody have any questions for the chief? All right, thank you, chief. Moving right along. Hey Zach, you're, you need to unmute, Zach.
Just click key spot. All right, the, the, going on to General Administration and Finance, if Sherry or Sandy have anything. But we did send out the monthly report last week with that information in there, so if there's any questions, Sandy can address those. Otherwise, Sherry or Sandy, if you have anything to add.
Just that April's pretty busy. We have quarter for finance, it's a quarter end, so we have all our quarterly reports that have to be done. And it's also busy because we're trying to get all of our insurance policies renewed and everything done, preparing, of course, for our budget. So it's just a busy time, and trying to work this way is, it takes a long time because a lot of people are not actually in their office. So when you send emails, you don't get your responses. When you try to call, you don't get people. So when you're trying to do what you normally do in a day's work, it could take you two or three days to get a response. So, but we're learning, and we're getting there, and everything's coming together. So if you have any questions on the cash report or on the department totals, feel free to reach out to me, call or email, just let me know.
All right, anybody have any questions for Administration? All right, is, what else you got for staff, Zach?
That's everybody. I don't think I missed anybody.
All right.
They're chiming now.
Okay, I think you did. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. All right, so we'll move on to number seven, which is the Piedmont Natural Gas Encroachment Agreement.
All righty, so I'm not sure, let me scroll through real quick. Is a representative from Piedmont Natural Gas on here?
Hey Zach, this is Mike Walili.
Yeah, just want to make sure you're here. Let me go ahead and give the brief background on this. Piedmont Natural Gas has applied for an encroachment agreement to install a natural gas line along portions of Yopon Drive and Neptune Drive, and all encroachments within the town right-of-way must be approved by the Board of Commissioners. So on the screen, you can see the map of the location, of the proposed location for the line. And I've also included a draft encroachment agreement. This is identical to the encroachment agreement we used for Deer Creek. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and since we have a representative from Piedmont Natural Gas as well on the line, I've also handed every him to answer any questions that come up.
I have a comment, Zach.
Okay.
You ready?
Yeah.
Um, I, I had been talking to Piedmont and very supportive of this effort to get the, the gas line in the neighborhoods in Cape Carteret. And they came by my house, and I talked several times to the guy that was, I don't even recall his name. But anyway, they talked about it, and we looked at the location, everything. But what, the thing I was disappointed when the contractor come in, he gave me a, a price of $1,800 to convert three devices, which are not much more complicated than drilling out an orifice and flipping the, the regulator. There's a little spring in the back of the regulators that you have to flip over, and that seemed like an absorptive price. And I hope that that isn't something that everybody's faced with. I won't live long enough to realize the savings at $1,800. $1,800. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else kind of comments or questions for the representative that's here from the gas company? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the Piedmont Natural Gas to approve the encroachment agreement.
Motion to approve, Mike King.
Uh, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Jim raises his hand first on it. All right, all in favor?
Mike King, aye.
Hey, thank you, gentlemen. Motion is passed. And thank you to the staff from the gas company. We sure appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Sharon. You all have a great evening.
You too. Next, item number eight is a text amendment to modify parking and actual use for the veterinary hospitals in the B-20 zoning district and public hearing. Tell us all about it, Zach.
All righty, so this is a text amendment to veterinary office use in Appendix B. So the following changes are requested to Appendix B, Table of Permitted Uses and Parking Space Requirements in the Town of Cape Carteret Code Ordinances. And the change is to modify the following permitted use in the B-20 commercial zoning district, which is veterinary offices, striking the verbiage without interior or exterior boarding facilities and without outdoor pins or runs, and then adding the language and their associated ancillary uses, and then adding the parking category of D, which is one space for each 600 square feet of gross floor area. The proposed text amendment is consistent with Section 4.1 of the 2007 Town of Cape Carteret Land Use Plan. The Planning Board voted unanimously in support of the proposed text amendment to Appendix B at their April 7, 2020 Planning Board Meeting, and the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving the proposed text amendment to Appendix B of the Town of Cape Carteret Code Ordinances. And I'll scroll down so y'all can see the text amendment on the screen.
All right, well, I will entertain a motion to accept the text amendment to modify. Do I have a motion? Jim, you're, you're muted, but I saw your hand go up. So Jim, Jim has made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, thanks, Steve, Don also. Any discussion? Okay, without any discussion, all in favor?
King, yes.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, everybody. All right, motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda, item number nine is the Island Pet Commercial Site Plan, CSP, and public hearing.
Just to rewind real quick for the public hearing on this item, so I guess before, we'll reverse that, before that vote took place, if you want to open up the public hearing and see if anybody has a comment on that item, and then probably vote again after that.
Okay, do we need to go out of this session, or just have a motion to go to the public hearing?
Yeah, just, yeah, if you want to do a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, all right, well, then do I have a motion to open public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
You go to public.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Second from Mike King. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going into public. And we have some public on here. Any comments from the public?
It's a great idea.
That was Charlie, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Charlie. Thanks for being here. Uh, without any more comments from the public, I guess I will entertain a notion to go out of public notice, correct?
Yeah, so you had to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, close public hearing.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Don, Don seconds. All in favor? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mike. All right, so that being said, now we're back to the regular meeting, and back to issue number nine. That's, the public hearing is over, so I guess, so now we move to ten, or do we stay at nine?
Uh, so we would go on to, so we would go on to item number ten. The reason being that, because after the public hearing, we have to allow for, because this is an electronic format, we have to allow 24 hours for the public to submit written comments. So we'll officially take the vote on this item on Friday, the special meeting, this Friday at 10 a.m.
Okay.
Uh, I've got a question. I had some comments on the commercial site plan. Would that be reserved till Friday?
Yeah, you can make, you can make those comments this evening. But just the actual vote on approving it, we have to wait 24 hours after the public hearing to vote. So it just, for the record, that'll be this Friday, May 22nd, the same link and access information as this meeting this evening at 10 a.m. on Friday, May 22nd. That way it's stated for the record of this meeting. But, um, yeah, we just have to wait that 24 hours before the board can vote on these public hearing items.
Okay, well, I'll give you my comment, and perhaps you can have the questions resolved by Friday. So the first one was.
Commissioner King, if I, if I could go ahead and I'll present the Island Hospital CSP, and then we could go into comments from there.
Okay.
Okay. You with that, Mayor Baker?
Yes, let's proceed.
All right. All right, so discussion, the Island Pet Veterinary Hospital has applied for a commercial site plan to construct a veterinary hospital facility at 110 Golf and Dolphin Drive. The parcel is located in the B-20 commercial zoning district of the town, where veterinary hospitals are considered a permitted use and are subject to the CSP process. The proposed minimum, the proposed development meets the minimum lot size requirement of the district, which the minimum is 20,000 square feet, as well as the required setbacks, a 40-foot front, zero lot lines on the sides, and 25-foot rear. The Planning Board voted unanimously in support of the proposed CSP for the Island Pet Veterinary Hospital at their April 7, 2020 Planning Board Meeting, and the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving the commercial site plan for the Island Pet Veterinary Hospital. And then we'll also do a public hearing on this one as well.
So are we doing the public hearing Friday?
The public hearing would be tonight, and then the vote would be on Friday.
All right, so we need to make a motion to go into public hearing now?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion, we go into public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Don. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye, King.
Thank you, Ms. King. All right, we're agreed. We are now into the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment? All right, hearing, no comments presented at this time. I will accept the motion to come out of public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Jim. Second?
King, second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, we are out of the public hearing. We're back into the regular meeting. Uh, Mr. Freshwater, I think, is here. So if anybody had any questions, I guess, Mike, you had some comments?
I, I had, yeah, two, two issues. One, and let me preface that with, this is a private street, so the rules may apply differently on a private street in relation to the ordinance than if it were a public street owned by the town. And the, the fire hydrant was moved across the street onto the side of, about the midpoint of the site where the, where the facility is going to be. And when you locate fire hydrants in the commercial districts, there's a 300-foot distance you have to have between that and, and edge of the building. And what I would do, since you've moved it right within 25 feet of the building, it would make sense for any developer to move that thing up the road away so that it could serve other adjacent properties in, in the, in the future without having to put another one in. These are quite expensive. When we used to put them in in the town, they were, I think the unit itself was, was $2,500 or $3,000, then you got the labor to cut into the line. So that would be my issue, and it just would make sense to move it someplace where it could be of better use down the road. The second issue is, and Zach helped me with this, I believe 154049, the sidewalk ordinance requires a sidewalk in the right-of-way in front of the building. And am I incorrect on that?
Yes, we had a, we consulted with Attorney DeSelm, and he had read that section of the ordinance, and given the interpretation that it does not apply to this circumstance, in part because this is also a, essentially a private road, so there's no public right-of-way that exists at this location.
Okay, so it is because it is a private street. Were that a public street, it would be required?
Essentially, the ordinance, the ordinance did change maybe two years ago in terms of what kind of developments were, would require a sidewalk to be installed. So a commercial shopping center development would be the type of development within that triangle formed by 58, 24 and Taylor Notion. That's the type of development that would require a sidewalk to be installed. But just even looking at the ordinance how it currently stands, this wouldn't be considered public right-of-way. This is all private roadway.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think within the triangle of Taylor Notion, 58 and 24, they are required, and that clears it up. It should have been a public street. They're required a five-foot sidewalk in front of the, front of the building. You know, eventually when that all gets developed, will be hopefully interconnected with sidewalks. But because it's a private street, I, and that's the reason it was left out?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any more comments? Or questions for Mr. Freshwater? If not, then I assume we just move on, because, just to reiterate, they had some changes from the General Assembly as far as anything regarding a public notice. We have to give 24 hours after a meeting, so that's why we're going to have the special meeting Friday. So we'll vote on this Friday, if I understand correctly. Right, Zach?
Yes, that's correct. The, the legislature added that provision just recently about having to wait 24 hours for those written public comments. But on Friday, we'll have each of these items, and at that point, it'll just be voting, going down the list and voting on each of these items.
May I?
This will be the.
I'm sorry, may I add a comment to the fire hydrant issue?
Yes, please.
This is John Freshwater. Zach and I talked about it, and I emailed a copy of the site plan to West Carteret Fire Department, and the response I got back is the, well, I'll read it to you. The hydrant placement for the proposed building is currently past the entrance. Is it possible to have it on the aisle and prior to entering the property? So I'm assuming what Mr. Mathias is asking for is for me to move it to the shopping center side of the driveway? And I'll further communicate with him, but I just wanted to share that comment.
Yeah, can I comment on that? Why wouldn't you move it the other way to the north? You know, you can still meet the requirements, and it gets it to that in a parcel that's above that that might not have to put in a fire hydrant because you got the 300-foot requirement? Or was that, did Mr. Mathis even look at that, or he just wanted it where he wanted it?
I'd like to have more detail as to exactly where he wants it, other than just before the driveway. I mean, I follow your logic, Mike. I just wanted to, um, I just. I just felt like, and Zach felt like it was a good idea to get input. I, I wanted input not only on the fire hydrant placement, but if he had any comments on any of it, but that was the only comment he had.
Okay, the other comment I would have on it is, putting a T in a six-inch line, uh, is counterproductive, but I, again, it's private property. So, uh, uh, I don't know the town has any say in that. I would never put a T on a hydrant if you could put it right into six-inch main.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, the main is on the opposite side of the street anyway. So in order to get it on the side of the property, which was agreed to at the Planning Board Meeting, to get it on the side of the property that the veterinary hospital is going on, we're gonna have to insert a T and go under the road. Yep.
That's, uh, in my mind, kind of unnecessary. The requirement is three-hundred foot, and if it was on the other side, you wouldn't have to run that T. Uh, you know, in a dynamic situation, you use flow, you lose flow whenever you, uh, put a T in something that doesn't need it, so.
Yes, sir. I, I follow you.
I'm done.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And, you know, there again, we get some, uh, feedback from the water company itself. Uh, I've done a lot of these in my, my history. Usually what we would try to do is if, if, if we were gonna move a hydrant across the street, we would make the service stamps off of that fire line as well. That way we'd have a little usage off of that line, keep the water from getting stagnant. But, uh, we'll check back with the fire chief and everybody included. Hopefully have a little more information for Friday. Anybody else got any questions?
A lot, you reminded me of one more thing. I'm sorry I keep bringing this up. Yeah, you have to flush that thing, cause it's in a T where you wouldn't if it was up on the main part. Uh, and I, did anybody talk with the, uh, the water company on this? They, uh, put in a lot of them over the, my time with the town, and they are very picky about where these go and where they're put in, and, uh, and who pays for them. So, uh, I, I wonder if, if anybody in moving it across the street had consulted with, uh, the water company regarding that move.
Mike, I, I had not. Um, John Ritchie, prior to the Planning Board Meeting, the first one, we had to come back a second time, had discussed it, but not in that detail, not as to moving it under the street, or exactly where we were gonna put it, just that we could put a fire hydrant on that line. So those details do need to be addressed, but there was, there was, um, I, I don't know the exact word, impetus, or, or desire to make sure the hydrant went under the road and was on the same side by Planning Board member.
Okay. Well, ju- just, the people who stopped the show on these things is the water company, cause it's their, it's their line, uh, it's their water. And, uh, so just, Zach, we're gonna need to make sure that there, we've touched base, uh, and if we could do that before Friday, that would be helpful.
Yes, yeah, and just to add that, and I know that that was voiced at the Planning Board about the preference on the location for the fire hydrant, but, um, since it's on private property, just to clarify, that we wouldn't be able to stipulate where on the private property it goes. That's probably, that's between the two property owners about coordinating where they would like it to go, but we couldn't require it as a condition of the CFP, um, just to, to further clarify that. But, um, that would be helpful, I think, for, um, John, if you wanna speak with the water company and, and verify, um, with them on their ends, and then also with, uh, with the fire department to determine their rationale behind shifting it closer to the shopping center. I don't know if that might be because it's shifting it closer to existing developments as propos- as opposed to having it closer to future development that doesn't exist now. Um, but we could probably get some additional information on that.
Okay, sure.
Uh, well, I keep, one final thing, Zach, uh, when you notice, uh...
You've already said?
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Mike. You've already said one final thing, but add one more.
All right, I, I, I'm sorry. People say things and it brings stuff up. When you look at this on, uh, GIS, uh, the fire hydrants, and, and that's a great tool when you're planning this, cause you can measure distances from, but the fire hydrants are shown incorrectly on the GIS. I had to physically go out and, and measure physically where they were, um, to this site. So, you might call Maureen down at the county, uh, mapping, and maybe they can fix that for us. I'm done, finally.
Are you sure?
I'm never sure.
All right, thanks, Mike. Anybody else have any more comments? All right, well, if not, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, uh, number eleven, flood damage prevention ordinance, and another public hearing.
Yep, just to, hold on just a second. So we also have animal house conditional use permit. We might have got out of order on the, on the order. That's number ten.
My bad.
And so we would, no, I think, yeah, we can go ahead into that. I'll go ahead and read through that, then, uh... All right, so Island Pet Veterinary Hospital, who is the property owner of one-ten Golf and Dolphin Drive, has requested a conditional use permit application in conjunction with Animal House to construct a pet daycare and boarding facility at one-ten Golf and Dolphin Drive. The property is located in the B-twenty Commercial Zoning District, where pet daycare and boarding facilities are considered a conditional use based, based on the conditional use permit application, as well as the submitted plans and develop- the submitted plans and development appear to be, to meet the applicable setbacks of the B-twenty Commercial Zoning District. The Planning Board voted unanimously at their April seventh, twenty-twenty Planning Board Meeting to, for a favorable recommendation of the proposed CFP for Animal House to the Board of Commissioners. And the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving the proposed conditional use permit for Animal House at one-ten Golf and Dolphin Drive. And for this one, um, Attorney DeSelmson sent me an email just before, um, just before the meeting this evening, um, about the process for this conditional use permit. Um, so basically, since we're conducting it in electronic format, and I might yield over to Jonathan if you wanna walk us through, but basically, we just need to confirm that everybody who has standing, um, as it came to that property, um, is given the opportunity and consent, and they consent to electronic participation. And those that wanna speak on this matter will need to be sworn in. So, um, I've sent that over to Sherry. She could deliver the oath to swear those individuals in once we identify them. But, um, Jonathan Outlaw, if that covers everything, or if there's anything else?
Yeah, um, I, I think that covers pretty much everything. The only thing I would add is, um, after the public comment section, um, there are, uh, it looks like four different findings that have to be made by the board. Um, a simple majority vote will do on those. Um, and I can go ahead and read through those, or we can wait until after the public comment section, uh, Zach, whatever you think would be best. But, um, basically, y'all will want to walk through those one by one, um, vote on those findings individually. Um, the board can also, uh, impose or require additional restrictions if it, if it so chooses. Um, but, yeah, as far as the initial motion, second, and then public comment, and then anyone who wants to submit themselves for public commenting will have to be sworn in. Um, I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay, so if I'm...
Go ahead. Yeah, I was gonna say, if there's anybody who, who is with the applicant, or represents the applicant, or anybody else who wants to deliver that sworn testimony, I guess, please, uh, speak up now, so that we could, uh, get everybody sworn in.
Um, Matt or Julie, do you, which of y'all would like to speak for the animal house?
Okay, well, uh, it doesn't matter. Julie can do it.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
I, I can hear you fine.
Okay, yeah, so I'll do it. Julie Henderson here.
Okay, does she have...
Yeah, Sherry, if you wanna have them, um, raise their right hand, I don't think we can see their webcam, but we'll take their word for it. And, uh, and run through that statement that I, I texted it over to you a little while ago. Can't hear your audio.
Can you hear?
Jonathan, does it have to be the work that does it, or could I read the statement, basically, and translate for Sherry? We can't hear.
I, I think as long as they're sworn in, it's all right. Um, I, I don't think there's any requirement that they're going to do it.
Okay. Let's see, I'll go ahead and read that. All right, so this will just be Matt and Julie. Uh, John, are you also going to provide any testimony?
Uh, I don't anticipate needing to.
Okay, okay. Good deal. All right, so I guess I would read this as, uh, do you affirm, Matt and Julie, do you affirm under penalties of perjury that the testimony that you offered to this Board of Commissioners will be true?
We do.
Yes.
All right, and I'm saying that on behalf of Sherry. All right, I think we're good. Um, now what we could do is if you have any comments about the project, um, I've got the conditional use permit application on the screen here. Um, I can answer any of those questions that come up, or, uh, Matt and Julie, if you wanna provide any background or additional information?
Uh, well, we've been in business in Jacksonville for about twenty-six years now. We're a family-owned business. Um, and we feel like we'll offer, you know, of, an asset to the community, and I think it's something that's needed there. And I think it pairs very well with, uh, Island Veterinary. So we hope that you guys are happy to, to get our business in your area. We're happy to be there, or hope that we can be there.
All righty, um, and I've, like I said, I've got the conditional use permit application on the screen. Um, and everybody has a copy of this as well, but just running through, if there's any questions that pop up from this, and if not, then we can go into each of these specific questions. I'll pull those up and put those on the screen, so everybody can see those as well. All right, any questions? If not, then I'll pull up the questions for the finding of fact. Um, I, I guess, Jonathan, that would constitute the extent of the public hearing, right? Would be those comments?
Right. There, there don't need to be, um, if anyone wants to offer some sort of, uh, comment, or, um, or as how they feel, um, this conditional use permit would affect the area, um, with regard to the, the finding of the fact. I think that needs to be heard as well, and obviously they'll need to submit themselves to being sworn in as well.
So should we go ahead and proceed with formulating the finding of fact?
I, I think that would be a good idea, um, just to go ahead and, if anybody wants to respond to any of those individually, to make sure that those are out in the open. Um, they're also, uh, if anybody want, would like to offer some sort of, um, question or rebuttal to, um, the applicant, that, that'd also be a, um, something that probably needs to be allowed.
What I'll do is I'll...
Zach, are you waiting for comment?
Yes, I just pulled up the, the findings, the four findings of fact on the screen. Um, the board will need to run through each of these findings of fact. The first one is, the first one is, it's the board, it's the board's conclusion that the proposed use will or will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and is developed according to the plan submitted and approved. This conclusion is based off the following findings of fact. So I guess first off, and Jonathan said they're gonna vote on each of these one by one, correct?
Correct, yeah. And, um, there'll need to be a motion on each individual one, and then open it up for public comment.
Will that be today? Will that be today or Friday of voting?
Today is fine.
All right, so if I understand, we need to, we need, are we gotta go to public comment on each one of these? Is that right?
Correct, each individually, if anyone wants to comment on those.
All right, so do we, sorry, someone's got some wind going in here. All right, so do we need to vote on it first, or go to public comment, then come back, vote on each one of them?
So, um, y'all will want to move to accept these, um, individually, second, go to public comment, and then vote on them after public comment. Um, and, and I would point out too, so on this first one, um, the statutory requirement is a finding that, uh, the proposed use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed. So es- essentially, um, if you're going to vote for the conditional use permit, you're voting will not. And if you're voting against the conditional use permit based on these findings, you're voting will. If that makes sense.
Okay, so I guess I'm entertaining a motion to accept the first conditional... Trying to think how to word this, for the, uh, first item on the conditional use permit worksheet.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, and now we need to, uh, for discussion, uh, have a motion to go to public comment. Hey, Don, have a second? Jim, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so we're in the public comment phase now for item number one of the conditional use workshop. Does anybody, uh, watching like to make a comment?
Hey, I'll make a co- uh, yeah, Mike King, I'd like to make a comment. This is, the whole facility is quite a bit different from what was submitted back in March. And, uh, at the time, I talked with, uh, the applicants about doing just what is being done here. My question is to Julie and Matt, are you in partnership with the veterinary side of that, or is there some kind of arrangement, uh, uh, to, to run in this part of the operation?
We are, we will be tenants of hers. Um, Michelle Cox and Veterinary Hospital will own our building, and then we will lease it from her.
Got it. But i- it is a, uh, partnership or an arrangement of sorts to run not only the veterinary clinic, but also the, I'll call it a doggy daycare.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll be working together, yeah.
Thank you very, I think, I think that, uh, having a, a total facility, uh, is, uh, is a big improvement from the original, uh, project that I saw, which only included the veterinary clinic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public that would like to make a comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion to come out of public comment. Thank you, Don, second please. Alright Jeff, all in favor?
Aye, King.
Alright, thank you. Now we're out of public, back to the regular meeting and we will consider the conditional use permit worksheet, item number two, if you would like to read that, Zach. Or if anybody has any questions about it.
Do we not have to vote on each individual one as we proceed? Is that what I understood from Jonathan?
Correct.
Thank you, you're right, you're right, Steve. So now we need to vote on that, sorry about that, fellas.
And also, do we need to include the will not in the language, Jonathan? Is will not materially endanger?
Yeah, I believe the best way to probably word that is to see if the board votes that the proposed use will not materially endanger, et cetera. So, so that if you're voting for, you're voting that it will not. And if you're voting against, you're voting that it will.
Okay, so under the premise that we're voting will not, I'll make the motion to accept number one on the conditional use permit worksheet. Is that, is that sufficient for a motion, Jonathan?
I believe so, I think that will.
I'll second.
Okay, alright. I think we got that squared away, second.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Don, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll do it all again three more times, right?
That's right.
Alright, you want to read the second one and then we'll work on that one?
You want me to go? Or Zach?
I prefer Jonathan, Jonathan, did you, you read the first ones, didn't you? Zach, did Jonathan read the first one?
No, I think I read the first one. Jonathan's welcome to read it though, either way.
Well, I think that's a good idea, because, because just like offering the advice on the will or will not, I'd like to have that on the next three, that way we go ahead and have that clear so we don't mess anything up.
Yeah, Jonathan, thank you.
Sir, it's the board's conclusion that the use does or does not meet all conditions and specifications required by the ordinance and other applicable town, county, state, and federal laws and regulations. This conclusion is based on the following findings of fact. And here, the requirement of the statute is that you find the board's conclusion is that the use does meet all conditions, specifications required by the ordinance.
So do we need to make a motion to that effect so we could go into public comment? Or do we go into public comment before we make a motion? Normally, we make a motion on the item.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd say go, go ahead and make a motion, get it seconded and then move to open up for public comment.
Okay, I'll make the motion on item number two, to accept item number two, the conditional use permit worksheet with the word does meet all conditions, specifications required by the ordinance, et cetera.
I'll second.
Alright, and with the second from, from Don, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, wait a minute, we're supposed to go into the public?
Yes.
So, so with that, we need a motion to go into the public. Public hearing.
Move that we go to public hearing on item number two.
Thank you, Jim, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Jim. We're now, have opened up the public hearing for item number two. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments on item number two? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to go back to end the public hearing and go back to the regular meeting. Don, and a second? I can't see everybody, anybody make a second?
I did, so I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now we're back in regular meeting where we've already had the motion and the second to accept item number two that does meet all conditions. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Now we'll do the same thing again on number three, correct?
Correct.
Alright, we're getting it down.
Alright.
So Jonathan, if you would, let us, direct us on this one as well.
Sir, this one says, it's the board's conclusion that the proposed use will or will not substantially injure the value of abutting or adjoining property or that the use is a public necessity. This conclusion is based on the following findings of fact. And the statute requires that you find, that the board finds that the proposed use will not substantially injure the value, et cetera.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for item number three on conditional use permit worksheet, that it will not substantially injure the value of serving along adjoining properties. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Don, do I have a second? Okay, thank you, all in favor? I'm sorry, we've got to go into the public now, right? So now we need to entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item number three. Thank you, Jim, do I have a second? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we're now into the public hearing phase. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment about item number three? Item number three on the conditional use permit workshop. Alright, and not hearing any public comments. I will entertain a motion to go back, to leave the public hearing and go back to the regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Leave the public comment, go back to the regular meeting.
Thank you, yes. Have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen. Now we're back in regular meeting and we've already had the motion. We've had the second and now we can vote on accepting item number three. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion number three passes. One more time, gentlemen, one more time. So Jonathan, for the last time on this particular, would you, would you mind?
Sir, number four says, it's the board's conclusion that the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will or will not be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the land use plan as updated and amended for the town. This conclusion is based on the following findings of fact. And the conclusion here to meet with the statute is that the plan will be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with the land use plan.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion for item number four, the conclusion that it will be in harmony. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you, and now I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll make that motion going to public hearing.
Thank you, Jeff, a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, we are now in the public hearing phase in regards to item number four. We'd like to open this up now, if anyone from the public would like to make a comment. Alright, and without having any public comment, I would entertain a motion to, excuse me, to leave the public comment section and go back to the regular meeting. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Jim, second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, we're out of the public hearing and back to the regular meeting. We have already had the motion and we've already had the second. So now ask who with all in favor, item number four?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you very much, so that is over, thank goodness. Thank you, Josh, I appreciate it, man, because it's a little bit confusing for me on that.
That's right. Just to kind of finalize this, I think having made the four findings of fact, you probably need to go ahead and do a motion to accept the conditional use permit. And that, that should finalize it for, for number 10, so.
Okay, so I have a motion to accept.
I'll make motion to accept the conditional use permit.
Alright, I have a second?
Second.
Jeff? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much. I assume we're done with that? Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look forward, look forward to seeing you guys doing some, some very good business.
Yeah, thank you, we look forward to it, we're very excited. You guys bring your pets to see us.
I do.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so I got my glasses on now, I can actually read a little better. So I think now we are down to the number 11, correct, Zach?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, flood damage prevention ordinance and public hearing.
Alright, switching the screen back. Alright, the town of Cape Codaret is statutory required to adopt an updated flood damage prevention ordinance before June 19th, 2020. This date aligns with the effective dates of the new fifth and D firm for our jurisdiction. The attached flood damage prevention ordinance is the state model ordinance and will replace our existing flood damage prevention ordinance. I've included a marked up copy of the FDPO as well as a clean copy of the ordinance. The planning board voted unanimously in support of the proposed flood damage prevention ordinance with the changes that they suggested during the April 7th, 2020 planning board meeting. And the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving the proposed flood damage prevention ordinance for the town of Cape Codaret. And then this item will also require a public hearing to be held as well.
Okay, so with the other items that we're going to vote on Friday, we do the same. We just need to go to public hearing on this and then vote on Friday, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, do I have a motion to go to public hearing? Okay, thank you, a second?
Second.
Alrighty, all in favor? Alright, we have, thank you, we have now opened up the public hearing. Or is there anybody from the public who would like to comment? Okay, being, here no one making any comments, I will now entertain a motion to come out of the public notice and go back to the normal meeting. Thank you, Don, second? Okay, Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thanks, gentlemen. And we vote on that Friday, correct, Zach?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, we'll have this Friday. You see, there's a lot of pages, trying to get on to the next item.
Yeah, okay, and the next item is a discussion of the bond referendum. So as soon as you get to your paperwork, we'll let you tell us all about it.
Alright, here we go. So, at a previous Board of Commissioners meeting, additional information was requested on the bond referendum process to complete the Cape Codaret Trail. Since that meeting, Attorney DeSelm's has researched the process and recommended that the board consider securing an attorney who specializes in the bond referendum process. The anticipated cost of securing an attorney to guide the town through this process would be $5,000. I've also included the information compiled by Attorney DeSelm's to this memo and the requested actions for the Board of Commissioners to provide guidance on whether to proceed with the bond referendum process and whether the board would like to go with an outside legal counsel who specializes in the bond referendum process, if we should retain that individual to provide that service to the town. One of the items, just to provide a little bit of background, we have some of the dates on here that were provided by the bond referendum attorney who specializes in this. So you could see we're coming up on some of the deadlines pretty quickly, so. I know some of these might be flexible in talking with, with Brett earlier and we had reached out to the county about what the date would be if we were going to put the information to the Board of Elections to have it on the ballot for November. And I believe we got the timeline that by July, we need to get that information to them. We, John Freshwater and I have been working on a Part F grant application. And the Part F grant application requires a 50% local match on that particular grant. So the idea would be if we moved forward with the bond referendum process, we could utilize the funds from the bond as the local match. So we were estimating that the potential bond referendum would be for $750,000 to complete the entire length of the trail. The maximum amount that you can get for a Part F grant is the 500,000. And that's half of that, I guess, which would be the 250,000 is what they would supply. So we could, in theory, reduce the cost of the bond to just $500,000 rather than 750,000. So that's something, if we choose to go forward with that process, it'd be advantageous for us to use that bond as our local match for that grant process as it could significantly decrease our costs that we have to incur and also reduce the amount of the bond that's required. So just one consideration I wanted to mention. And, and I've heard a couple of different things in terms of which direction everybody wants to go, so I'll just open it up for that at this time. And if there's any questions about the process or specifics that, that we're able to answer this evening, we'll, we'll attempt to do so.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, put a motion on the table to move forward with this reparation, referendum process as Zach just stated. Do we need to make a separate motion if this motion passes to hire outside legal services, Jonathan? Would that be in a separate motion?
Yes, that would be a separate motion.
Okay, well, I'll repeat what I just, a motion I just made to move forward with the referendum process. It was outlined in the timetable, I guess, Zach?
I'm going to second his motion so we can go into discussion.
Okay, so we have a second, now we'll open it up for discussion. Who would like to speak?
I've, I've got some questions. Go ahead, Don.
I've been thinking a lot about this lately, last few weeks and especially the last few days. I put a lot of thought into this. Right now, citizens of this town have got a vested interest in this trail. We spent about a quarter of a million... We've spent about a quarter of a million dollars in taxpayer money on this trail already. The town put up $125,000. The county matched that with 125,000. And we're all, we all pay county taxes also, some, all our tax dollars. We put 250,000 plus dollars into this trail. And right now, we've got bits and pieces. We've got three sections of trail. None of it connects. It just, none of it's being used. It's just, it's just sitting out there. I think that we need to put it up to the taxpayers, or let them have their voice in it. Put it up to the voters and see what does this town want to do? Do they want us to proceed? Do they want us to look at securing a bond and finishing this thing, or do they want us not to? And, yeah, I know, I know the argument's going to come up that, you know, really, a lot of people in this town don't vote. I don't know what, 10, 15, 20% of the registered voters actually come to the polls? But my argument to that is, you know, whose fault is that? You know, I mean, every citizen has the right, and I believe a civic duty or civic responsibility to vote, whether it be for elected officials or whether it be for a referendum like this. And when we have an election, we have not only Election Day, but we have early voting, which usually goes about two weeks, including Saturday. And if somebody absolutely cannot get to the polls to vote because they're out of town or they're physically unable, that's what we have absentee ballots for. And the way I look at it is, if somebody doesn't vote, they're basically saying they don't care. They're just leaving it up to everybody else to make the decision. I think we need to put this out to the voters and see what, what do you want to do? Do you want us to finish this trail or not? If we're able to get a bond, if we, if we proceed with that, that doesn't mean that we're going to stop looking for grants, looking, trying to get donations. I mean, that would, that would continue. We might get the same paid off. We might be successful in getting a grant, or we might get one of these donations. But, you know, we would continue, but if the voters say, no, we don't want to do it, then fine. We're no worse off than we are right now. It's sitting right where it is. We'll continue looking for grants, continue trying to get donations. But until that money comes along, you know, we will not spend any tax dollars on it. That's just the way I feel. I feel that we need to put it up to the citizens of this town and let them make the decision, not us. Yeah, I mean, if we were voting tonight, are we going to go out and take out a loan, you know, in paper to say, my vote would be an absolute no? Not spend another tax dollar on it. I'm just saying, we need to put it up to the voters, let them decide.
Um.
And with that, I'll turn my mic off.
Thank you, Don. Don, thank you, Don. That was very thorough. Don expressed my feelings exactly. When this trail first started, the people were told that the trail was going to be built with donations and grants and whatnot. And as Attorney Curtis spoke earlier, and as Zach has alluded to, that the grants have essentially dried up. So when the Board of Commissioners and the previous board allocated $125,000 of our taxpayers' money to the trail, our citizens automatically at that point have skin in the game. So, it's, it's my feeling that we should not spend another dime of taxpayer money until our citizens vote to let us know that they either want the trail or not. If, if they don't want it, then I'm assuming we'll still apply for grants. But, it tells us not to apply any more taxpayer dollars to that trail. And once again, thank you, Don. That was very thorough. My feelings exactly.
All right, Steve. Jim, you want to comment?
Yes. I agree, to the extent that people, it would be crazy if everybody could tell us what they wanted to do. If they would just raise their hands and say yes or no, that would be great. To go through this process is going to be at a minimum, $5,000 just for the outside attorney. I don't know what other costs are going to be involved. I think there was an estimate of $2,000 to $3,000 in the budget. You know, I was there in the room when the proposal was made. Some of the people here in attendance tonight made that proposal and told us that it wasn't going to cost us anything. And you guys have both mentioned that as well. That this was going to be something that was going to be taken care of by contributions, subscriptions, donations, grants. And it started off with a big bang, big party, races. And, and then, everybody who was going to contribute, contributed. We were left with nothing. I mean, there wasn't enough to build a single stretch. We had to go. We had to dig in and throw in our own money, even though, at the end of that first meeting, I recall our former mayor saying, okay, if you want it, but it's your money, not a dime of taxpayer money. We're already into it, like you said, a quarter of a million dollars. I don't think another three quarters of a million dollars is going to make it any better. What we have now are runners and walkers and bikers and stroller pushers. Can't go anyplace. And if they, if we, if that trail was complete, I doubt 5% of the population would be using it. First of all, in order to make that circuit, you've got to cross two dozen driveways, streets, parking areas. Every time you go sailing down on your bike, and we have two kinds of bikers in this town, I've noticed, out there walking the dog. Those who are strolling around just taking it in the air, and those people who are going like crazy. People are going like crazy. You're not going to be able to do that on that, on that circuit because of all the driveways and intersections that have to cross. Again, what you're saying is, let them decide. Let them tell us.
We lost them.
I just don't like spending the extra money. I'm confident that when we put it up to a vote, it won't pass during 60 years that anybody has decided to float a bond. And what are we floating it for? Not for a fire department building, or our police department building, or town hall, but for a trail, half a million dollars minimum for a trail, a sidewalk. You're going to build a sidewalk, have it side there, go someplace, like from Oak Pond down to Bay Shore, so people can actually walk on it. I mean, to get somewhere. That's me.
Okay, Jim.
Can I respond, can I respond to, answer a question that I think Commissioner Noyes just had?
Sure, go right ahead.
I would, as far as the $5,000, Commissioner Noyes, I think it'd be appropriate to take the $5,000 out of the MOTV fund. I think that's what it's there for, to, to pay for the lawyers' fees. And I'd like to reiterate that the motion that I made, you know, for the proceeding referendum was to let the citizens decide whether they want it or not. Thank you.
Mayor, Mike King? Can I have a crack at this?
Sure, Mike, go ahead. And then we'll see if Jeff's got something to say.
Well, okay. Where do we get the number, 500,000, or, to finish this? Is, is, do we have a bona fide estimate for that?
750,000.
How much?
750,000.
Okay, 750,000, but do we have an estimate for that?
That's a rough estimate, but we're going to have a more specific estimate when the engineering's complete. That's what John Freshwater's currently working on, that he's been waiting on. The surveyor to complete the surveys, but once that's done, then we're going to reach out to some local contractors to get some ballpark pricing. But, right now, I think as a placeholder, that's a fair estimate. And I spoke to John before the meeting about that, but I think we're most comfortable with, with that as a placeholder to get the remaining portions of the trail completed.
Okay, okay. So, let's just use 750,000. What that means, what that means to us as a town, I, I own some bonds and I fool around with them a little bit. I'm certainly no expert. But, interest rates are incredibly good right now for something of this nature. They'll probably be less than 2%, might even be, depending on the rating of our town. We've never floated a bond, so we don't have a rating. But any rate, so it could be very economical in terms of the interest rate. So, you know, that's favorable. It isn't going, it isn't, it probably won't be over 2%, it'll probably be less than that. The question I have to ask is, you have to look at the results of the referendum. If it's successful and we, and it's for $750,000, we float a bond for that. And that'll, that'll cost us, the interest on that would be, say, say 2%, so you're talking about $15,000 a year. And we would pay that out, say, over 10 years. It might result in a tax increase somewhere between 2 and 3% that we'd have to raise during the 10th period, till we got that period down, period, that loan paid off. Would we, at the end of that period of time, my question would be, would that tax rate that we increased, would that thing go back to where it was? Or would that require a decision later on? That's a question. I may not have the answer, but that's something I would like to see answered. Second, if the answer on the referendum is yes, we go ahead, but if it's no, what do we do? And I did, Attorney DeSelm's, I had asked him several questions on this, and he did get back to me. And, because I've always felt, being the first project manager on this, this project, the money was easy. We, I had the first section done in almost no time flat, but it promptly dried up after that. And that was a section from Lowe's down to White Oak Elementary School. And we even had some difficulties in that early, those early days, getting it done, and DOT just added up the balance. So we ended up with that section costing the taxpayer less than 10% of the total cost. I can't remember what the final number was. But if we weren't successful, what the attorney said, we could use the same process we've been using of grants, hook or crook, however we can get the money to finish it. And I would be absolutely adamant, absolutely adamant that we finish in front of Marine Federal and the section from the school down to the Handymark. Then, we've got it finished up to the school and up just past by the Gulf and Dolphin. The rest could be done because it's required by ordinance in the center section of the triangle. That's all required by ordinance. Now, it isn't a 10-foot wide, but five foot, but in the, in the event that there's a no, there's a way to complete a trail. So where I'm standing on this thing is, if, and I'm thinking perhaps it's not going to pass, I need to have an option, and I feel like, I feel okay going forward with this thing. If it does fail, that we'll have an option to finish what we started. Let me see, I've got some notes here. See if I've got anything else. So, in summary, what we're going to have to do is raise the tax rate, say it's a 10-year bond. Oh, by the way, we could go much longer than 10 years, and the, the bond yield curve is very flat after 10 years. So, if it costs us, say, one and a, one and three quarters for 10 years, it probably wouldn't be more than two to go out 20 years, if, if we chose to do that. But we would have to, we would, given our current budgets, we would have to raise the tax rate during the period of that bond to pay it off. That's, that's where I'm at on it.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Jeff, would you like to make a comment?
I'd like, first of all, make, make this clear that I am not against the trail whatsoever, for it, ever. I am not for of raising taxes to pay for it, and I have to echo what Mr. Jim said about the previous, you know, this is far away money was going to be set on the trail. We're looking at spending monies such as $5,000, $3,000 for attorneys and all this. We can actually take those extra monies and put it towards in that session that I just spoke about, between White Oak School to the Handymark. Also include, if we can get that completed, would include getting it to the library and to the gym and to the doctor's office to do fire practice. I'd like to see that section done and completed with money being spent or money raised. Taxpayers having to pay for this extensively. When I say for that area between the school and the mark, I mean, that would help tremendously. If we can get the DOT involved in a pedestrian walkway, Taylor Nation Road from Star Hill, whoever there as well. Tie those folks into trail and to, to get to Lowe's and other areas. And I'm not against this trail. I just don't think this is the time, sort of talking about raising the taxes for referendum when we have this burden already upon us after getting to this coronavirus. So, I'm staying with that.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Anybody else have any more additional comments?
One more.
I got to reiterate just one statement that I've, that I've made multiple times. This is a motion to move forward with a referendum in which the people, not us, the people, have a say-so, whether they want to spend their money on this trail. And this, it's a, it, it should have been done from the, from the start of the trail, in my opinion, but it has, it didn't get done. And it's, the trail sitting as is, in my mind, is an embarrassment to our town. And this is a way to end it, once and for all. But once again, it's a referendum to let the people decide, not us.
Mr. Mayor?
Mike, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a question on Zach. Now, this include, when you said the 750,000, you're talking to the, the point of the triangle. Because originally, it went up through the Crowotan, and we ran it all kinds of trouble getting it through there. Is this for the complete triangle, which would be, I actually measured it out. It'll be a little bit more than we originally scoped, but it'll be about, let's see, 3.58 miles?
Yes, that's correct. It would go all the way up to the, the point of the triangle at Taylor Nation and 58. We were looking into crossing at that Crowotan property, but we would have to get an NEPA document and basically study all the wildlife and plant species that reside in that area and get a, basically a consultant to come in and do all of that, and then secure that from the federal government to get a, an easement essentially across there. So we opted to go the route of going up to Taylor Nation and 58 and then cutting back and staying within the DOT right away.
Okay. I've got one other question for you. Now, would this, these funds on this bond referendum be used exclusively for this trail?
That's my understanding of it. I think you have to state in the referendum the specific use for which those funds will be applied. So, if the parameter is set that it's for the construction of the Cape Codaret Trail, I think it would be limited in scope to just the construction of the Cape Codaret Trail.
Okay. I know I'm going to have something else, but I can't think of it right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, we have the motion and we have the second. Would you gentlemen like to vote? If so, then all in favor? I can't see everybody, so Zach, can you tell me? I think I saw Don raise his hand. Mike, can you give a verbal?
I'm an aye.
Okay. So Mike's for it, Don's for it. Steve, let me see. Steve, did you vote for it?
Yes, I did.
You had the motion, I assume you would. Okay. So that's three to two. Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is planning board appointments. We have an opening, I do believe.
Yes, that's correct. We currently have a vacant position on the Cape Codaret Planning Board that was created when the mayor took office. So the Board of Commissioners are asked to appoint a new member to fill the vacancy on the Cape Codaret Planning Board. And we do have one applicant that had submitted an application and expressed interest. And we do have one applicant that had submitted an application and expressed interest, and that's Susan Hall. I believe she was on the, I believe she was on here earlier, I think she's off of the call now. But Heather had reached out, Heather had reached out prior to this meeting and confirmed that she is still interested in that position. So other than that, we haven't received any other applications that I'm aware of at this time.
Well, I would entertain a motion to have Susan Hall added to the Planning Board.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second with discussion, please.
All right, we have a second for Mr. Waters. Discussion, Steve, you go right ahead.
One simple statement, Zach. I'm all for Susan Hall being on the board, but at the same time, I would like to know who the applicants are in advance of the meeting and not let it be, not spring it on us at the last minute in the future. If you have a list of applicants, if you could give us their names, possibly, is that something you can do beforehand?
Yeah, that's something you can do in the future. And if anybody had an alternate applicant in mind, they could also propose that as well in the same process, if there was other nominations for individuals.
No, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
We got discussion yet, or did we already vote?
No, you're in discussion, Mike. Go right ahead.
Okay, okay, I spoke with Susan Hall extensively on this. And also another individual, but, and he told me he was gonna put in an application, but he never did. And, believe it or not, I have forgotten his name. So, anyway, I think we have, Susan's been at several of our public meetings on issues, and I think she'd be a good addition to the board.
All right, anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, one more question, Zach. Is there anything in ordinance that anybody that wants to serve on the planning board, do they have to fill out an application?
I can go and pull up that section if you want. I believe that's, that is our typical practice for folks to express their interest. Although I think on other occasions, there's been a nomination process where people, if they had somebody in mind, suggested that individual in a, in a meeting such as this, and then there was a vote. If there was some other individual that they knew of that was interested. Typically, Heather handles most of the planning board appointments. I think that usually she has them fill out an application. But I do recall, I think people have nominated people in the past during the, that period of time when an appointment was considered.
Okay, I was just curious. I know, I remember nominating David Figway and maybe Will Baker. I can't remember, but I just wondered if it's, if they needed to fill out an application, that's all.
Steve, it's been done for that way since I got on the board in ninety-nine, to fill out an application. The ordinance is pretty clear that the Board of Commissioners makes the appointments. Now, if we had, if, we never do, but if we had a handful, it might be a different process we'd have to go through to, to see who we would appoint.
All right, any more comments? I'll just make one comment as far as Susan's abilities. I think she's a super smart lady. I think she'd be a great addition. With that said, gentlemen, we have, I believe we had a second on that, so I'll entertain a vote, all in favor of putting Susan Hall on the planning board?
King, aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. And Susan, if you're still here, welcome to the board. And with that, we shall do our updates and any other comments from the commissioners. I'll just start with who I see first, which is Jim Nalas. Jim, any comments or updates you'd like to present us this evening? Put your mic on, Jim.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I lost my cursor. The only thing I wanted to mention was, and this is, this relates back to the Animal House conditionally used permit. No objection, but some weeks ago, I got an email, I guess you guys did too, from a groomer who was upset with the prospect of Animal House coming in, described it as a big box store that was gonna take unfair, make unfair competition for the groomers and boarders. You know, you know, I got a dog, doesn't get groomed. But everybody who has a dog that gets groomed will love their dog, their groomers. They're not gonna be abandoning their groomers to go over to somebody who just showed up in town, even if it's a buck or two. But the main objection that she had was that it was gonna be unfair competition. And to my mind, the fact that a new business is competition for an existing business, never entering to board's decision on whether or not to approve a new business. And I'm gonna put this out for the benefit of lady, if she listens. That's all I have.
Well, Jim, just to let you know, I responded to that email, and that particular business is not in our town. So with that said, if it's not in our town, then, you know, I'm all for supporting the businesses that are in our town. And that's where I'll pretty much put most of my comments. You got anything else, Jim? All right, thank you. Don?
I don't have anything to report, but I did wanna talk about something briefly. I mean, with everything going on right now, I mean, we're all, with this pandemic and the stay-at-home, we're all facing something none of us had ever faced before in our lifetime. I mean, we're definitely in uncharted territory. And everybody has their own opinions about it. I mean, some people think this is the worst thing in the world, there's people that think it's a hoax, there's people in the middle, everybody's got their own feelings about it. And everybody has their own opinion on about how well or poorly the government is handling it as far as the federal government, state government. There are some people that feel like the government's doing exactly what they need to be doing. There are some people that feel they're not doing enough. There are some people that feel they're overstepping their bounds and, you know, infringing on their rights, doing too much. And it's not my intent to get into that with anybody. Everybody has their own opinions on that. But what I did wanna talk about just briefly, you see a lot of things in the news that, almost daily, about things that are happening across the country with the law enforcement and the police. I mean, you've seen a woman arrested in a park, you know, for having her child out in a park. I saw one where there were two deputies that approached a woman at her house because her neighbor had called and said that her little girl was playing with a little girl next door. And they were telling her then, you know, they, we're not here to charge you now, but we will be back and charge you if we hear that it's happening again. You've seen, I've seen a preacher carried out in handcuffs because they decided to have church services. I just want to say publicly now that I don't support, nor will I support, our police department taking some of these actions like what I've been seeing. I mean, just, you know, like I said, we've all got our own feelings on this, and everybody's got to take care of themselves. And yes, the police officers do have to enforce the law. But some, I think we've seen a lot of things, in my opinion, that are extreme. And I don't, I don't support our police department now or in the future. And I don't, I'm not saying they've done that, I don't think they have. But I just, I would not support our police officers going out and doing some of these things like I've just mentioned. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Don. Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say thank you to the staff and to employers who sent me the reference to my brother passing this Sunday to go due to the virus. Thank you for your thoughts and prayers.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for holding the fort down through this difficult time and making some difficult decisions you sure, I'm sure you've had to make. Zach and your staff for keeping, keeping town going. And especially the police department and Public Works who are out and about in the public. They haven't missed a day, to my knowledge. They're certainly in my neighborhood daily. Hats off to them. I know it takes a certain amount of courage to, to do that. And hopefully this mess will be over with. And like Don said, in my lifetime, I've never seen anything affect this country like this. I've seen a lot of bad things, but nothing like this. And, you know, we just have to keep the faith in God and hope that it, that it ends sooner rather than later. And Zach, thank you especially for taking care of our employees the way you have. And hopefully we'll get to the end of this where we can sit side by side in a conference room and make some of the difficult decisions we have to make from time to time. And that's all, oh, one more thing, I think, is it Friday, Zach, that we're meeting on this Bowsound Park issue? Is it Friday also?
Yes, we'll have that on the agenda for Friday.
Okay, Friday being a special meeting, is that correct?
Yes, Friday will be a special meeting. That'll be at ten o'clock AM this Friday. It'll be the same, same length that everybody used to access this meeting today.
I'd like to also thank the, thank the neighbors over here in Bay Shore for their patience in this, in this issue with the park. It's the most popular park maybe in the town. If you don't believe me, just close it down, put some police tape, and watch your phone ring off the hook. Thank Alex for going over there, especially like Commissioner King mentioned earlier, making the temporary repairs. And hopefully we can, we can get a permanent fix or solution on this thing Friday. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Steve. Okay, Mike?
One thing, just to comment on what Don had said. You know, I was pretty aggressive in this social distancing for, since the middle of March. In fact, I hadn't had a haircut in four months. So I see Don's is a little bit long, but mine's way longer than his. You know, the thing that, you know, I felt like he did, you know, people get on one side of an issue and others are not. But I was in a store and I had to get some cheese from the Delicatessen. And I walked over there, I looked over there, and not one person had a mask. And so, guess what, I didn't buy any cheese. I don't, we have a choice in the matter. And that's the way I feel about it. If I wanna be very stringent on myself, that's my choice. Second of all, I was out in my little boat just over, I thought this weekend was Memorial Day with a number of people in the town out and about. I went down to both boat ramps and all along the shore. And I have, they were, they were parked along the right-of-way, all the way up to, just about to Neptune on Manatee. And over in Bay Shore, it was just absolutely swamped. There was people waiting. I even took my boat in to see, make sure, just to see how things were going. And everybody was really civil and patient, and it was really working the way it ought to work. So, but our parks were, were well-used during this, this week. And God, I don't know what it's gonna be like this weekend. That's really all I have, and thanks, everybody, for being so patient and dealing with this very cumbersome way of having a meeting.
All right, thank you, Mike. Only comments I've really got is, you know, it's been five months since I became mayor, and wow. Just so much right after another, so just sort of in, behind a learning curve, trying to gather all this information. And I will say this, the people down here have just really touched my heart, especially the other mayors that I've come to meet and respect. Just can't say enough about them and the people in general in this town. Just so blessed to be here. And I think as far as I see, we're, the town of Morehead laid off ten employees today. That's very sad. And I just, I'm just very grateful that we're in the financial state we're in where we're not having to do that with our employees right now. So we, my kudos to the passport and Zach and staff for getting us to where we are today to where I think we can handle. I think it's gonna be a little bit of frustration for us coming up, and we're gonna see a little bit more as far as a financial impact. But I don't think it's gonna be as bad for us, because we have sort of been very prouled with the money, so to speak. So with that said, thank you, gentlemen, for your time and your service on the board. And can't thank you enough, Zach, for helping me out and trying to help guide me through all this. And like I say, going to all these meetings, and it just seems to be never-ending here lately. But thank you so much. With that, I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, do I have a second? Okay, thank you. Not all in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here. Thank you, Jonathan, for sitting in and your guidance today, greatly appreciated. And I hope everybody has a great week, and I guess we'll see you Friday, Charlie. Thank you, and Travis, and Michael, and Alex.
Mayor, do we, we have a budget meeting on June second, is that right, Zach? Ten o'clock?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Don't forget Friday, Mike.
I'm not, I got that one down. It was just the other one I was making sure on.
Okay. Yeah, y'all have a great weekend. Thank y'all.
Be safe, Don. Be safe, Don.
Question from the floor. Is that June second budget public?
Yeah, it'll be a public meeting.
Say again?
It'll be conducted, yes, yeah, it'll be a public meeting. And then the one later this week will also be a public meeting, same, same way to access that one as well.
Okay, I just hadn't seen any notifications. I'm on the sunshine list.
Yeah, we're waiting to make sure everything today was progressing so we can put the notice out first thing in the morning.
Back to Charlie.